Dr. Lennam, my?
Today is Friday, July 18. And let's start recording the order. Your call please.
Carl O'Leary Aguero. He's on fire. Rose Guino.
Here.
Gina Romans.
Here.
Belinda Biedon.
Here.
Frank Arroyo.
Here.
Richard Savman. Paige Velazquez.
Here.
We have a form. Dr. Yuriy Yarovata.
Here.
Kenneth Voltesa.
Here.
Simon Malinger.
Here, and can I say that they're saying they can't hear me.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Test one, two.
Very good here, very good here. All right. Besides our mission statement. One. Guam community foundation leader in career is technical. Next is the approval of our minutes. June 16, board meeting. All right, any can have a motion to twelve minutes. Move, all right, second.
Sir, sir.
All in favor, say yes. Any other discussions related to the minutes? Yes. All right. Any communications?
As we did receive your...
Is that for another review?
This is just, this just means that they're active.
ACCT. Oh, ACCT. Oh, we're active.
Yeah. We're active, we, and for GCC meeting, it's the... You're thinking we attended... The DIA Hawaii, you go in Hawaii, you go to Hawaii.
Thank you.
That was the prior, the pre-candidating.
Any public discussions? Any requests for public discussion? All right, then let's move on to reports. We'll start with the comments.
Okay, so start general fund. We now have received five million from the MDF. Hundred and sixty-seven for the capital equipment fund. The Wichi's five, that hundred and four thousand, and the post commission of two twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Oh, are you behind on the general fund?
So, on the general fund, we've received, based on the amount built. A little bit behind on the MDF, but based on the request, about seventy percent.
But is it, is it with closing up year?
Not, not that we can see right now, yeah. So, overall, overall, based on the amounts that we have built, based on the allotment schedule, we're at eighty-three percent. And overall, based on the budget, at sixty-nine percent. Six percent, so, but we still continue to receive the funding on other bases. And then other activities, capital projects for the campus. We have installed now eleven of the air conditioning replacements. We are monitoring some of the other air conditionings that we have on campus, including following up on some of the warranty. Because we do have warranty on the most recent ones scheduled to launch starting Tuesday. We don't have a reinspection and a list of all the areas, minor areas that we need to address. But it is on schedule for the next, starting Tuesday for the next two.
So, you get two like punch lists or just recommendations?
So, we have a team, we had teams going with them, teams, and we have lots of photos and areas and a list of things that we need to complete. We have, or we will, can build in five hundred. But building six hundred that were designed, well, first the allotment center is almost done, which will support at some point the move of the garbage bring over there. Until the construction for six hundred is completed. But we did have to come down that building, that building will not pass. There's so many issues with it. So...
What are we gonna do to...
Yeah, so we're gonna, yeah, we'll have to cordial it off. And again, there's a few classrooms, a few spaces that we've had to take out of the inspection until such time that they're ready. We're using some classrooms for storage for the equipment, but really, so there's no, so we won't have that inspection. Building classroom D1, we have to do some repairs and pull out, deducting on that. And so, we have to do a modification for that classroom. And we're standing down, hinting, we're having to do some, still some cleanup, so...
Is this an annual thing?
It will be an annual thing, it will be...
You gotta check this together, can we sample?
So, this is under, it's under environmental health and safety office. And vice president, those spaces for cleanup. And like I said, we've done a lot of work. And so, they'll come and do, we have the pre-inspections, so they'll come and do the inspections. There's some areas where we already have some approved variances. And there's some areas where we still need to address, primarily because we have here supplies on order that are not here yet. And we will address those. We have purchase orders to support, you know, all of these. GCC does have a scheduled walk party in open house on July 26. And this is basically a recruitment effort for us to showcase the campus. It looks great, it's got new paint. But really to showcase the programs that are in or behind the, you know, behind the paint, inside the classrooms. Identifying the programs that we do have. There will be a mini job fair for some programs, so, at the multipurpose auditorium. There is also a scheduled two K, five K in early August, and so that is, that information's already going out. They will be doing, for the next couple of weeks, they will be doing signups at my permission law to support that activity. And of course, you've got the news that GCC has received its eight-year accreditation op. A lot of institutional improvement. And I think one highlight that is identified in accommodation really is the voice of students. And so, that has to be, or has been a focus that we've been working on for many years. And that was accommodation that the college received in terms of how schedules are built based on sort of the system at the college.
So, we're gonna follow, what are you, celebration?
We celebrate all the time.
No, we need to stop. We need to stop.
Yes, and, and the communications office has put out the press release and again, identifying that we weren't, we weren't used as a pilot for the new accreditation standards. Which will allow us to obtain the eight years of accreditation in addition to that. And so, there's been a lot of, a lot of media associated with that, so, projects.
Hey, Dr. Poggi, can you share with the foundation board that we're giving them tools so that they can go out and use more money for that school?
Absolutely, and the chairwoman is aware, and...
She's challenging us.
I'm getting back. Again, chairwoman, it was just your, your...
We gave out some scholarships earlier.
All right. All right, this will lead to monthly activities report, student trustee.
Great, sitting there. Um, what else? Oh, yes, we're working on the next academic year calendar and we'll keep you all updated once this is finished. And we're planning for fall fest ideas, like activities. So, like, once, once and once comes together, it's, yeah, so, it's still being something for the students. Other than that? Of course, in regards to my very good Guam congress representatives. Unfortunately, some of our members has resigned, so we are moving on to our new business, which is election officers. So, our speaker recently resigned. Yes, so we're...
Simone from Pathetic Press.
How's it going, everybody? The regular scheduled summer classes just ended, and also, that was just wrapped up. I realize everything, I think it's starting now is the time where two weeks out, we start looking at the schedule and thinking about adjustments. Because we start seeing more students coming to the classes. But nothing, nothing new or presentative to the board in August. Francine Bellash is from our cosmetology department. And so, I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity. It was a great learning experience, good for me to see a broader perspective of the college. Negotiate the contract, that was a big learning experience for me. And maybe more appreciative of the college as a whole and all of the different working parts. So, thank you guys for that opportunity.
Thank you, and I appreciate the work you have done.
Simone, you actually did a very good job with communication and large fills she used to fill. So, if the next individual comes in, he's, we're concerned to communicate with more of you, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Where are the trustees coming in the afternoon? Oh, sure, sorry, sorry, Ken.
Yes, like President Johnson, we are also going, we're blowing groups to try to hit all the minor stuff that need to be... Students, we've done some inspections that we had before. So, so we're all looking at doing that. Of moving to a new platform. It's called, it's usually SaaS, so it services software. And it's a new, new platform, so we're moving over there to a lot of the areas. And so, that's ongoing and hopefully will be... I think the target that they're on is, is the stuff that we do now and we're doing now and maintaining the system. Other than that, accreditation already?
Oh, yeah. Stream that all our classes, that's possible. All right. And word, community average report? Let's tell you the stream.
Sure. So, sharing conference. Me, and Washington DC is also membership assembly. The lobby there is over five hundred nurses, lobby to the Congress and to Senate House. And put a budget to fund the title in. And that, that's very important for us in the college, because that's where the funding for the nursing education advanced program. So, those are the scholarships that being granted. So, it's, it's very, the atmosphere in DC is really tense. Because during that time of our lobby day is also the time for everybody's love funding. More so importantly for Guam, we do have a high population of our, the Guam that under Medicaid. So, one thing that we learned and we have meeting with Congressman Monahan, so actually Guam was, as a territory. It might be a little bit leveraged for this year, because they're not gonna be able to touch. But that's, doesn't mean that they're not gonna, you know, in the, that changes in executive order. So, and I know we are, and the college is very mindful and nice and monitoring that how this is gonna affect the rest of the educational funding. But it's, it's a, we're, it's gonna be, it's really also looking into the details and how this new build, the president's would affect us in our own specific area. So, but I know the college is, we, we have trained, again, we are working with the foundation and see how we can pull together a foundation for, you know, for the college. And continue to support our students in our mission. So, it's nice to representing the voice of Guam. So, with me is another, our president, the Commerce Association, Juan, on Saturday, this is San Robert, who is representing Guam. And I'm that membership assembly.
All right, so, let's share. Page.
Okay, construction projects, Wellness Center, so we did receive feedback from USDA and so, the OMDR application. So, Vice President Padua and I will be working to go to requirements. Hopefully, we can get that launched, we're in the process there.
What are we waiting on?
So, they've got a connect to the water source. They are working on the relocation of the fire alarm panel, so they're doing the water tapping, which is gonna be made. And then electrical panel, conditioning, and air conditioning system, so we're almost there. Five percent complete, so we're almost there. We're doing the exterior painting, the wiring installation, and electrical. And so, we do know that there is one main switchboard that we're still waiting on. Expected to be here this September, so hopefully that comes in soon.
The shipping of the goods here is really...
Culinary arts is currently at ninety-four point nine-nine percent, so we're almost finished with that as well. They are currently working on the fire suppression, the application of floor epoxy, painting, ducted diffuser installation on those. And so, six out of fourteen items have already been received back and as they are received, they're going to be installed. So, culinary is also...
Can we use the, the files?
So, we're, we're, we have to resolve what we're gonna do for the fall semester. So, Vice President and the department is working on that. Right now, the, right now, the request is working that with the architects right now.
When is it supposed to be done?
It was initially June of twenty-four. And was extended until April of twenty-five. And then made, and then it'll be done soon. So, there is some correction that is being done by the master electrician for that project. Still pending the notice to proceed from the Department of Interior. We are working with TRA because we may need to do a proposal for the scope of work related to the PV battery storage.
So, you're, they're going with an energy storage system now?
So, that, it's over two million dollars, has a PV battery storage.
Is it a large, a giant one or we thought in a box?
So, we've identified where we can place, and so...
Can I take a look at that?
It just has, yeah, it has a generator right now. So, we're hoping to use that specifically. Oh, because of the battery storage, we need to protect the building. Yeah, so, we're working through that. We're gonna, we're currently working with the architects on that.
Thank you, President Fong. Any other questions? Okay, let's proceed to the new business.
One is the policy, we've got a policy, formal policy for fifty-five, and then there's a clean copy. All the track changes are identified in here. All of the recommendations happening, incorporating into this, into this, into this latest, there's a latest one that, that I provided, yeah.
There's a date, right?
Yeah. And then, track change that, that's in, in our report.
I recommend the changes.
So, several, so, so, yes, we'll need to take a look from the HR side. So, we did some updates to the minimum fall provisions. And then, based on our process, we did some updates on the... And I think, I think this is more of a refined thing.
Teaching experience.
This is a collective review.
Do we have to delay the verbal conditional offer for a minute?
Please.
First two steps. Just looking at conditional, first step, we've got the, we've got the conditional.
So, in the last process, this was Ron Franco. There was a salary recognition opportunity that's presented to the board. And I think because it's a, it's just a conditional offer, I mean, it could be, it could, it could be verbal or... Because it's not perpetuated, it's not like a sign, it can be by legal, and... So, and usually, the verbal conditional offer is pending acceptance as opposed to an official... So, with normally, a, normally, a phone call that you're, you're being considered or selected, so that's a verbal conversation. And then after that, you're, that I would hear to process, or for the next step of the process.
So, it's not MVP all along?
We usually do a phone call.
Just a phone call?
For all, yeah, we usually do, we usually do a phone call. Because then you have to get, you know, the grant that they notify their employer, you may be doing reference checks, and so...
I think you just owe me it.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, okay, that's fine.
On step seven, how does the chief resource officer do the ad run check?
Based on references. There is a, there is a formal document that is sent to the previous member. Which identifies if you're new with their employment act. Any strengths or weaknesses really considered for rehire with the opportunity arose, and any other comments?
What are the...
Requiredness of please and what...
I see that.
Yeah, we don't do credit checks. Or direct tests.
Do you have optimism? We don't do, we do not do the tests.
If you are moving for both from down below, it's...
It's usually during the application process, but it's part of the conditional process. They are notifying that we will be doing background for the purchase checks, we've done any of that. It's, it's all the, it's all the government application. Because there are references that they identify when they attach with their resume, but there's also references that they produce as part of their... But would you not do a new job description? And that would be a published documentation. The job description, for the most part, is prescribed by law. So, there's some components in law, again, then part of this, part of this process, that we're not allowed to do.
So, under the acceptance of the current president's attempt to issue number four.
Zoom meeting, initial meeting with the board to determine if they want other, they want to engage. We have not used ACCT in the past. Oh, I just, I just brought it up. I just asked what kind of search, because I'm not, I, I know they do search every time we go to their conferences. They do have a separate section. I don't know the extent. They do have a, a poll of applicants that they, they'll profile and send. It's just determined, because of the cost, it would determine what the board's interest is. At what level is it just the access to the database to set up? Versus screening the application and saying, do you see fifty or maybe ten? versus screening the application and saying, do you see fifty or maybe ten?
We'll put this upon these, this cost on here.
Yeah, I don't know what it is. I haven't asked. I just wanted to know what kind of services. So they did make, G-Hom did make a referral this morning and I had their access, their information. And they can do an initial overview for the board, and then it would be the initial overview for the intent from the board, and then the overview and information provided to the screening committee, which is identified here. And that would be more than... Which means we need to, we need to, uh, uphold the policy so that we can...
With changes?
Work with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other questions or discussion to read the policy for fifty-five?
What was the last presidential search on the year?
Thousand. Six, six, seven?
Six, seven.
Six, yeah. Trust me, you know that.
I can't, two years ago.
All right. Let's move to our President Travel.
So we got a second presidential search. Firstly, it's just the establishment of the screening committee. And so all we need to do is authorize the establishment of the committee, and then we'll set up separate meetings for the committee to do.
What type of committee will it be?
Screening committee in our policy.
Sorry.
So place in our policy that we need to establish a screening committee for our presidential search. I do need a motion from the board to establish a screening committee for presidential search.
Sure.
Okay, all right. So there is a motion to establish this screening committee for presidential search. All in favor? C.A.I.
Aye.
We're gonna put together a pocket of the federal government events and we can figure out what's with the board members are willing to attend this, the conference, um, versus scheduling.
I saw that there are trainings on Ivan as well. I see that much of that too. If anyone's interested in the current, that there are trainings. It's like there are local trainings.
We did, uh, some coming in August. Yeah, so they do, they follow country trainings where they have like an RMI program. So there, there will be some rescheduling for August here on one. And some of it is this advanced training prior to the conference.
Okay. You want a motion to... Okay, I need to do a motion for... Second. All right. There is a motion for beauty travel to the APATH conference in number twenty twenty-five. All in favor? C.A.I.
Aye.
And so if you're interested, just let go.
And those give your last minute request. Right for that? Okay. Okay, next is the President's travel request.
Yes, so I'm a member of the APATH board, so this will be my last board meeting with them. They do cover a percentage of my travel. And there will be a panel for institutions of higher education based on the funding shifts from the federal government. So we're working through the details of that now. And so I'm, right now, it's, the panelists are from our region, so the President's from the PBC for our region that normally attend.
Who will be President, schedule it.
All in favor of President Travel request through APATH?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Good job, Rose.
I think we have more than... Second board and order travel history. So if you have any travel plans in the next month or two, please let, when the, when you can do the coordination.
And what probably said that's some kind of call? Go call the chairman or chairwoman, and then to that call for...
Let's move to executive session. Any motion, please?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Happy celebration.